Calling to order the Monday, September 19th, 2022, regular meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dean.
Here.
Councilmember Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hunnen.
Here.
Councilmember Price.
Here.
Councilmember Valani.
Here.
Mayor Turbrack.
Here. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Valani. Are there any changes or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Dean.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunnen.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. At this time, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge with us this evening as Pastor Zach Dunlap.
Let us be in a spirit of prayer. Good and loving God, thank you for the ability to live, work, worship, play, and pray in this wonderful little city of Berkeley. Empower us to work together for the good of this community and to see the good in one another, even when we disagree. As we move into the fall season, we lift up teachers and students, parents, guardians, and administrators, asking that your blessing would rest upon each class and upon each classroom, that we might create spaces where children not only learn but flourish. As the weather gets colder later this week and we break out our favorite sweaters and flannel, may we also wrap ourselves in the warmth of your love, trusting that simple acts of great love really can change the world. They are, in fact, the only thing that ever has. Guide our city council tonight as they deliberate and make decisions about the future of our little corner of the world. Comfort the hurting, heal the broken, hear the cries of the oppressed, and send each of us your peace, that we might dwell together in harmony, respecting our differences and following the way of love. We come from many different faith backgrounds in this city of Berkeley, Christians and Muslims, Hindus and Buddhists, atheists and agnostics, but it is in the strong name of Jesus and the power of the Holy Spirit that I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we now move to public comments, where you are invited to come up and present your thoughts and comments on items that are not included on tonight's agenda. You will have the opportunity to speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. Remember, council members will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign in at the clerk's desk. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence, and you will have three minutes to speak. After that, I will ask you to please return to your seats. Really? Did not expect that. It's a surprise. In case anyone's just really thinking about it, I'll give you another couple seconds. No? All right, thank you. Thank you, Mike. I didn't want that to...
He gave me the look, so. Good evening, council. Mike McGinnis, Executive Director of the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority. Make no bones about it, Berkeley, Michigan is ready for our bookly season. I want to extend the opportunity to the entire Berkeley community. You may have noticed that our skeleton decor has started to appear along Coolidge and 12 Mile. If you, as a community member, would like to help put a spin on a skeleton and decorate it, we have already begun delivering skeletons or arranging it for community members to pick them up, to decorate them with a particular Berkeley or downtown vibe. We are intentionally having skeletons decorated with the vibe of the small business that's located nearest it, but there are other opportunities for community organizations and schools and families to put their distinctive bookly stamp on it as well. If you would like to see more of that festivity and decoration continue throughout our downtown street scape and you're not in for the decoration game, we'd be honored to have you as a bookly booster for $20, a skeleton sponsor for 100, goblins and ghouls for 250, and on up. So that's an opportunity for our businesses, our organizations, and citizens to help make our downtown and, as a result, our community especially ready for the bookly season. So just want to put that out there. You can find out more at downtownberkeley.com. You can reach out to me, and if you like the skeletons, I'm Mike McGinnis and we're the DDA, and if you don't like them, the City Manager's Office would like to hear from you.
That's why I had to give you the look, Mike. I figured you'd have something to offer tonight. Anybody else? All right, seeing nobody else jumping forward for public comments, we will move on to this evening's order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 39th regular city council meeting on Monday, August 8th, 2022, and special city council meeting on August 15th, 2022. Two, warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1377 and warrant number 1378. Three, motion number M8522. Matter of approving the 2022-2023 winter maintenance agreement between the Road Commission for Oakland County and the City of Berkeley. The city will be reimbursed a total of $11,735.26, which will be paid in two installments, $5,867.63 due in December 2022, and $5,867.63 due in March 2023. Four, proclamation number P2822. Matter proclaiming October 2022 as Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce Month. Five, proclamation number P2922. Matter proclaiming October 2022 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Six, proclamation number P3022. Matter proclaiming October 2022 as National Cyber Security Awareness Month. Seven, proclamation number P3122. Matter proclaiming October 2022 as National Disability Employment Awareness Month. Eight, proclamation number P3222. Matter proclaiming and celebrating the American Library Association's Banned Books Week from September 18th to September 24th at Berkeley Public Library.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on our consent agenda?
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunnen.
Yes.
Price.
Yes.
Valani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. We now move on to this evening's regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one?
Recognitions, presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
So we have a couple this evening. First up, proclamation P2822, and I've asked Councilmember Valani to read that proclaiming October 22 as Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce Month. I know we have some folks with us from the chamber, so if you want to come right on up to that microphone, that'd be great. Executive Director Darlene Rothman and President Tim Murad, thank you.
All right. A proclamation of the city, of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, proclaiming October 2022 as Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce Month. Whereas the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce works with the Berkeley area business community to advance the civic, economic, personal, social, and cultural systems of our area, and whereas the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce has contributed to the protection and commerce in the Berkeley business climate for over 35 years since its incorporation, and whereas the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce, under the guidance of its Board of Directors, works to promote the region's business community through education, information, and the many networking and training opportunities that are developed by the Chamber, and whereas the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce and its members provide citizens with a strong business environment that increases employment, retail trade, and commerce, and business growth to make the City of Berkeley a better place to live. And whereas, in the wake of COVID-19, the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce has remained adaptable and resilient in planning Art Bash and Street Art Fest, two momentous events that help our local economy flourish, and whereas the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce supports municipalities by hosting the State of Cities event, which provides updates from the City of Berkeley, the City of Huntington Woods, the Berkeley School District, the Downtown Development Authority, and the Chamber itself to the citizens, and whereas the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce encourages the growth of existing services and commercial firms, and encourages new firms and individuals to locate in the City of Berkeley, and whereas the Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce is supported by the financial and voluntary resources of over 150 small and medium-sized businesses located and operating in the Berkeley and Huntington Woods area. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims, Section 1, that the month of October 2022 is hereby proclaimed as Berkeley Area Chamber of Commerce Month in the City of Berkeley, proclaimed this 19th day of September 2022 at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council, signed by Mayor Daniel Turbrack.
Come on up and get that. Let's go really old school.
Thank you.
Well, I really didn't come prepared to say anything, but, you know, I've been involved in the Chamber for quite a while. I used to sit on the Planning Commission, was liaison, and then when I went into a business of my own, I joined the Chamber immediately and became a member of the Board, and I think a year in, Darlene, we need a new president, and she said, "You've been around longer than even she has." So I took on the role as president and really, and of course, took on the role and we went right into the pandemic. So it was a tough time. Thanks to a grant from, I think, Oakland County, we survived. So, but now we're back thriving again. We had probably the largest turnout for the Art Bash, and we had a very successful street art festival, and we got more stuff coming. So State of the Cities is going to be back live in person this year. Details on that will be coming. We're trying to tie in to Berkeley's 100th anniversary next year. We're partnering with the Historical Museum to do a kit home tour. So if anybody is looking to get involved in that, please reach out to us. We're putting together a committee now to get that going. And then we're also launching, we did, we always do something to recognize the school district every year. We usually did a welcome backpacket, and last year it was very difficult because we were still kind of coming out of the pandemic, that a lot of businesses didn't have anything to give to them. So we came up with the idea of a business pass that we handed out to the school district, all the employees of the school district, and it gave them discounts at different businesses, Chamber businesses, and we're now going to launch that for the whole community, and it's going to be something they can purchase. We're tying that in with a lot of the school organizations to have them sell it and share the revenue for that. So some of those discounts, some of the restaurants are offering 10%, 15% off, and it's not just for one visit, it's for every visit, for a whole, and that, we're starting to sell them now, aren't we? We're, so we're starting to sell them now, and they'll be good to the end of 2024, and if, or 23, yeah. And the hope is this will be something that we can sell every year and tie in. So we're not sitting on our hands. And then the other big thing is part of the Bookly Month is the first weekend of the month of October. Really, it's the 31st of September and the 1st of October, we have Restaurant Weekend. So again, all the restaurants that are involved in it will be offering some sort of a discount. So, so all these things can't happen without the help of our community and all those businesses that are Chamber members, and we're hoping to grow that by some of these incentives. So, so a lot more to come, and we're just going to keep on plugging away, and we're always looking for volunteers for Street Art Fest, Art Bash. We're going to be looking for a lot of volunteers for this home tour, and, you know, so things are going strong. So, and part of it is this lady standing to my right.
Well, thank you, Tim, and thank you, Darlene, for everything that you guys have done and continue to do.
I want, just add to what Tim said. Yeah, I walked into the room, and over half the people in this room are partners with what the Chamber does. We couldn't do what we do without the partnership, Street Art Fest and Art Bash, you know, the incredible ease of what happens behind the scenes. Roseanne knows more of all the things happening, the details, but it's really seamless is how it feels, and when I walk and look around the room, even in the audience, the partnerships we have, you know, not every city can say, or Chamber can say that they have this real at-ease communication and partnership, and we don't take it for granted, and we appreciate all that the community does. The businesses appreciate it because it's seamless for them, and working with the DDA, we know everyone gets confused between the two of us, but we work everything together because the whole idea is to support Berkeley and bring more people here, more businesses here, more people to move here. It all ties in together, and all of you are involved with all those decisions that are made, and we extremely appreciate it. So, thank you. And the thing that he was alluding to, that's going to go, that's on sale as of this week, is called Burke Perk, so keep your eyes open for it.
Perfect timing. It's almost like we planned it. Didn't, but it's almost like we did.
Yep.
And again, as you mentioned, Tim, at the very beginning, you didn't have anything planned. I tell you what, the work that our Chamber does, you guys don't have to really say anything because your actions and what you bring to our community, the events and everything else certainly speaks for itself. So thank you both very much, and everybody else who's a member of the Chamber as well. We'll now move on to the second item here, and I've asked Councilmember Price to read P Proclamation 3222. Matter proclaiming and celebrating the American Library Association's Banned Books Week from September 18th to September 24th at the Berkeley Public Library, and I'd like to invite our library director to come on up while Councilmember Price reads this.
Thank you.
A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, celebrating the American Library Association's Banned Books Week. Whereas the freedom to read is essential to our democracy, and reading is among our greatest freedoms, and whereas privacy is essential to the exercise of that freedom, and the right to privacy is the right to open inquiry without having the subject of one's interest examined or scrutinized by others, and whereas the freedom to read is protected by our Constitution, and whereas some individuals, groups, and public authorities work to remove or limit access to reading materials, to censor content in schools, to label, quote, "controversial" and quote, "views," to distribute lists of, quote, "objectionable" and quote, "books" or authors, and to purge libraries of materials reflecting the diversity of society, and whereas both governmental intimidation and the fear of censorship cause authors who seek to avoid controversy to practice self-censorship, thus limiting our access to new ideas, and whereas every silencing of a heresy, every enforcement of an orthodoxy diminishes the toughness and resilience of American society and leaves it less able to deal with controversy and difference, and whereas Americans still favor free enterprise and ideas and expression, and can be trusted to exercise critical judgment, to recognize propaganda and misinformation, and to make their own decisions about what they read and believe, and to exercise the responsibilities that accompany this freedom, and whereas intellectual freedom is essential to the preservation of a free society and a creative culture, and whereas conformity limits the range and variety of inquiry and expression on which our democracy and our culture depend, and whereas the American Library Association's Banned Books Week, celebrating the freedom to read, is observed during the last full week of September each year as a reminder to Americans not to take their precious freedom for granted, and whereas Banned Books Week celebrates the freedom to choose or the freedom to express one's opinion, even if that opinion might be considered unorthodox or unpopular, and stresses the importance of ensuring the availability of those unorthodox or unpopular viewpoints to all who wish to read them. Now, therefore, be it that the City of Berkeley celebrates the American Library Association's Banned Books Week, September 18th to September 24th, and be it further that the City of Berkeley encourages all libraries and bookstores to acquire and make available materials representative of all the people in our society, and be it further that the City of Berkeley encourages free people to read freely now and forever. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims that the week of September 18th to 24th is, is the American Library Association's Banned Books Week in the City of Berkeley, proclaimed this 19th day of September 2022 at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Signed, Daniel J. Turbrack, Mayor.
Mr. Director.
All right. Thank you very much to the council for that proclamation. I'd like to thank the library board members who are here tonight, Rita, our chair, Amanda, Jordan, and Margaret, our newest board member. They very much support this proclamation, and thank you for reading it at the meeting tonight. At the library, we all are all about free choice of what you want to read or listen to or watch, and we want to make everything available to the community. So, thank you for your support.
Well, thank you, and thank you for the board taking the time to show up this evening. Obviously, it's very important what our library is, what it means to our community, and what it means to everybody else. So I appreciate the work that you all do and what you continue to do for our community, and again, you know what my wife does, so she's really humble. Thank you all.
Thank you.
We now move on to item number two, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Resolution number R1522. Matter of recognizing Mike Hunyer and his 17-year commitment to the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R1522?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Valani with support from Councilmember Hunnen. Mr. Baumgartner, you want to say a couple words before I get to read this?
It would be my pleasure, sir. Thank you very much. As I've said in previous meetings, Mike Hunyer, as the motion says, put in 17 fantastic years in serving the City of Berkeley and all of its residents, and he's sadly retired, and we miss him a great deal, so much so that we're willing to bring him back. We'll just keep making up resolutions for him to thank him. But in all seriousness, Mike has been just absolutely fantastic to work with. Not only has he served at the DPW for years and years, Mike was always the guy around City Hall, and whenever he needed something, he would, he would come and just get it done, I mean, just in his magic way. He'd look at a problem, think for a few minutes, and then just figure out how to make it work. We miss him around City Hall. I thankfully get to see him right down the road from me in his retirement years, but I know DPW misses him as well, and so you've got gentlemen here joining you from that department, including our director, Sean Young.
Sean, you want to come up now, or you want to wait till I read it?
How about, how about Mike comes up first? Come on up, Mike. Come on up here. Come on up.
After I read this, then you can say some things before Sean gets to say some things. A resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Mike Hunyer for his 17 years of service with the Berkeley Department of Public Works and his dedication to the residents of the City of Berkeley. Whereas Mike Hunyer began working for the city on May 2nd, 2005, and whereas, over the years, Mr. Hunyer has become not only a vital member of our staff, but also a mentor and friend as well. Whereas his attention to detail was exemplary in every aspect of what he did, and whereas, no matter the circumstance, the Department of Public Works and residents of Berkeley have always been able to rely on Mike to be there in a time of need, and whereas Mr. Hunyer's dedication to this city has been shown time and time again, even extending his retirement deadline to complete the training of other employees, and whereas Mike has made the decision to fully retire and will be incredibly missed throughout the Department and the City of Berkeley. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section 1, that the Council of the City of Berkeley appreciates the effort, dedication, and sacrifice that Mr. Hunyer has shown through his 17 years of employment with the City of Berkeley. You will truly be missed. Introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, September 19th, 2022, and unfortunately for you, it was signed by me.
Yeah, for those of you who didn't hear, Bridgette wants to know if the cruise spouse parties in my garage are going to continue.
Priorities, you know.
Well, they want to know too, and yes, they're going to continue. So I truly appreciate this. It was completely unexpected, and really, I don't know what more to say outside of, it was fun. Well, most of it. Some of it. But thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, Mike, before you go, I was talking to Sean earlier, and we do actually have one last special project we'd like you to be a part of. It's not until next year, but it's organizing the barricades after the cruise fest. Therefore, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sean, come on up here. I guess that's a no, huh?
So, things about Mike.
No, stay there. Stay right there.
Worked with Mike for quite a long time. A good friend. I'm going to miss him dearly.
Well, then I'll have to keep coming around and bugging you.
If you ever need something written, like a computer wrote it out, that's Mike. Everything's documented. It's just incredible, the handwriting. I don't know what to say about it.
Yeah, I'd make a lousy doctor.
But truly, he will be missed. He's great to work with.
Appreciate that. Like I said, it was fun. Most.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Sean, obviously, and the rest of the crew that's here to celebrate Mike. Congratulations again. We'll miss you, but we know you're not getting far.
If the council doesn't mind, and everybody doesn't mind, I'm pretty sure the family said something about getting dinner.
Do you want to introduce the family first?
Buying me dinner, so I guess we're gonna just exit. Pardon?
Do you want to introduce the family first?
Yeah, my wife is here, Martha, my daughter Megan, and my granddaughter Michaela. And then, of course, you guys know that it was really nice of these guys to, you know, to come on their night off as well to support, and I appreciate that. And I'll see all of you. And I'll see all of you often. Seeing as how they drive right by my house all the, every day of the week.
Keep an eye on you.
Yes, they do.
Congratulations. We'll let you guys go enjoy dinner. You've earned it.
Thank you.
You've earned it. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-1522?
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-8622, matter of approving the Department of Public Safety to enter into a 10-year agreement for an equipment refresh bundle from Axon Enterprise, Inc. This bundle includes 32 body-worn cameras, 32 TASER 7 electro-muscular disruption weapons, 13 Axon Fleet in-car cameras, Axon VR training platform, all installation, cloud-based storage, redaction software, training, and accessories for the yearly fee of $100,438.31 from Axon Enterprise, Inc., 17800 North 85th Street, Scottsdale, Arizona, 85255. Axon Enterprise, Inc. is a sole-source provider. Funds for the purchase of TASER 7 and BWCs are budgeted into the equipment account 101-310-982-000.
Is there a motion to approve M-8622?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, it's been a long-term goal for our city to acquire body-worn cameras, and in the course of looking into these items, we found several other things, as the motion says, that we have the access to through this Axon bundle. I believe if we buy by the end of the night, we get the Pocket Fisherman for free as well. They throw that right in. But in all seriousness, Chief Kane has put within your package a very robust explanation of what we get for it, the benefits of pursuing the package in this manner, and then also a cost comparison of what we would have budgeted long-term versus the option that we have here with this 10-year bundle. So, Chief Kane is available to answer any additional questions you have as well.
Chief, anything you want to add before we hand it over to questions?
No, just that this, well, I guess, yes, I do. This is, we kind of stumbled upon this while we were doing our research, and this really seems the way that most departments around us are going, and this is a company that just about all departments around us are switching to, including ones that have our current in-car cameras now. As you know, body-worn cameras was a goal of ours, has been for several years, and we were trying to find a way to financially do it. And as you know, a couple of years now, we had budgeted for the complete program, and this is a way we can do it even a couple of years earlier at a substantial savings.
Questions for the chief. Councilmember Price?
Yes, Chief, could you elaborate, please, on some of the training that is part of this bundle and what that will bring to our officers in our city?
Sure, that, well, there's quite a bit of different training. The in-car cameras, there's training on that, the body-worn cameras, there's training on that, the tasers, the devices, the EMDs. We have the current model of Axon device now, so there will be additional training like there is on any new device, but that one's pretty similar. The virtual reality is what we're really excited about. As you know, we've talked about the Milo system here for several years, and it was kind of one of those, when we get to it, we get to it, and this is a way of giving us some virtual training. The demonstration's been really, really good, a lot of de-escalation, a lot of, it's not so much use of force, but it's really decision-making, which is, the more we can do that, the better. And it looks like a really good product. A lot of cities around us have also purchased this, and it's brand-new. Royal Oak actually purchased this probably three or four years ago. They just got delivery on it, so we're getting into the perfect timing also.
I saw in the memo that that system of virtual training will enhance the quality and quantity of the decision-making and de-escalation training that will be delivered to our personnel. I wonder how it compares to the simulation in Oak Park. When I was in the Citizens Academy, we had the privilege of experiencing that, and is this a similar training of decision-making or?
It is. Instead of looking at a screen, you actually wear a headset, and we're starting with, I believe, two, and there'll be a possibility to add more down the road to where our officers can make decisions collectively, and the decisions of one officer affects another officer's outcomes too, which is what we're really, we're looking for realistic, as realistic training as we can. And Milo's great, don't get me wrong, but this is even, I think, even more applicable to what we do, especially when it comes to some of the decision-making, when it comes to people with special needs and/or mental illness.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Chief, for bringing this before us tonight. Building on the previous questions, in terms of like supply chain issues and things, what kind of expected delivery window are we anticipating? Is this a this-year thing or a next-year or?
For the body-worn cameras and the tasers, anywhere from six to eight weeks. The Fleet, the in-car camera and the VR is probably going to be March, April of next year is what we're looking at, which is actually quicker than we can get our current system right now for replacements, quite honestly, so.
Excellent. Excellent. Thank you. And the training would be commensurate with the delivery of the materials, right?
Yes. And we already have TASER instructors now, so this will give us three TASER instructors on the new TASER system.
Fantastic. Thank you again.
Sure.
Additional questions? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to commend the department for embracing such, not only a robust program, but it really, I think, illustrates what our priorities are as a municipality, and to bring not only the best, but to be so forward-thinking with all these different modules and the training, to Councilmember Price's point. I do have a question regarding the redaction piece of this. How many people will be trained in utilizing that?
Right, our current system right now, we have three, so we'll keep it at that, and that usually has us covered through vacations or unexpected absences also.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, I want to echo how great I think this is, and, you know, that I really think this will help instill even more trust in the public, you know, and also glad that you were able to find significant savings at the same time. Two questions. Do we think we'll get any resale value from the current equipment in the vehicles when we remove that?
There may be a little bit. On some of the listservs I'm on, people are looking for, a lot of it, quite honestly, is stopgap to keep their systems in service until they switch to maybe another company. Not to badmouth the company we have now, but they were sold to a larger company, and we've noticed a decrease in service and availability of the product, and they won't even ship you the new parts unless you re-up contracts. So, there is some potential. I'm not going to lie, it's probably not a lot, but hopefully we'll be able to get some.
All right. And then, since part of this is a cloud solution with uploading the videos, you know, if there's any network downtime, does that impact, you know, just the ability to get work done, day-to-day operations?
No, each camera, both the in-car cameras and the body-worn cameras, have hard drives in them that will store video for...
I think it was about two days.
Yeah, two, yeah, so there's quite a bit. Not concerned about working 12-hour shifts, the battery should be fine. So, the infrastructure, and this is not a new product, and really, Axon is the gold standard when it comes to body-worn cameras. They're the only game in town when it comes to the EMDs, so this is a very reputable company. And I should say too, I don't know of any of our officers that don't embrace the body-worn camera, they've been asking for it for some time, so this isn't like something we're forced on, and this is what our people want.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no additional questions, again, I want to echo my colleagues' thanks for being so proactive. Training is something that we spend a lot of time talking about and not just talking about implementing on a very wide scale, and being able to improve not only how we train, but what we're using to train and the various things that our officers have at their disposal for safety for themselves, but for the safety of all of our residents, including certainly de-escalation training, is incredibly important and something that I'm very proud to support this evening as well. With that, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M-8622?
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes. We now move to item number four, please, Ms. Mitchell.
Motion number M-8722, matter of approving applicant for issuance of a development district on-premise liquor license under Section 521A1B of 2006 PA 501 MCL 436 dot 1521A1B, Applicant Bergs Provisions LLC, DBA Mongers Provisions 3127, 12 Mile Row, Berkeley, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve M-8722?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Protem Dean. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Monger's Provision, who has been with us now for just about a year or so, I believe, has really made such a positive impression in the community. They are really well-regarded, and so much so that they're already looking at an expansion plan and expanding their offering to the community as well. So, what you have before you is an application for the redevelopment license, which they have access to by virtue of being located in our downtown Development Authority District. You have in here the plans for their expansion as well as the review of the application. I'll note it's been signed by the city clerk, the city planner, and as well as been reviewed by our public safety director as well. As always, these items do come before the city attorney as well, and we have a recommendation for approval for you this evening.
We have a representative with us. Come on up.
How you doing? Thank you for reviewing the application. We've really enjoyed doing business here. I'm William Werner, co-owner of Monger's Provisions, and we, yeah, we love Berkeley. We, the quality and character of the events that are put on downtown has been excellent. The quality of the other businesses in the downtown district is excellent, and we love our neighbors on 12 Mile and some of the, you know, the businesses on Coolidge are wonderful too, and I can't say enough about how happy we are to have located here, and we're really excited to, you know, grow that offering. We're one of the premier specialty food shops in the Midwest, and we have got some of the coolest products you're going to find anywhere. And yet, at the same time, you can come in and get a scoop of gelato for your kid for four or five bucks. So, we really try to have a blend of, you know, high-end and rare items and approachable offerings as well with grilled cheese sandwiches and tomato soup and whatnot. So, being able to continue that with our wine selection that we've got and actually serve on-premise is going to be a major, you know, benefit to our business as well, and we think the community.
I appreciate you being with us this evening. Questions from council regarding the application. Mayor Protem?
Thank you. I don't really have a question. I just have to express how delighted I am that you're not only staying but expanding not only what you offer, but the space, and I look forward to sitting down and actually having a glass of wine and not getting home and, you know. And just a funny aside, my husband really enjoys your soup and grilled cheese, and one day I'm sitting at my phone, you know, like, and I'm like, "Oh, Mongers, I'm not there." So, when he came home, I'm like, "How was your soup and sandwich?", and he looked at me. He emailed receipts. So, there's no escaping that, but no, it's, the quality is amazing, and to your point too, I think I've been in your store often, and I see people from all over. So, it's also elevating our downtown, not only with what you offer, but the other businesses are benefiting because, you know, if you're coming into your store, my store, one of the stores, you go, "Oh, look, this is over there." So, it's another place to go, and now there's even more to do. So, yay, all around. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't, if, do any of you know who Alice Waters is?
Yes.
So, last night, we hosted Alice Waters and a handful of the Ford family at the store. So, downtown Berkeley, she's, Alice Waters is one of the most influential chefs in the United States with a restaurant in Berkeley, California, actually. And we did an event in partnership with the Henry Ford Museum, and they brought her to the store, and Lisa Ford was there and a couple other members of the Ford family as well, and, you know, we're really proud to introduce those people to Berkeley as well.
Great.
That's awesome. Thank you. We'll go questions from council first, then we'll go over to City Manager. Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, one note and then one question. Just a note on your application, you said, you know, that there's a 50-person minimum for the seating. The state law is actually 25 minimum. So, if you want to do fewer seats, you're welcome to it. But question, when will, do you think the new space will be ready?
Some of that will depend on the pace that the MLCC moves at. You know, our last application for...
So, super fast.
Our application for our SDM license took three and a half to four months, maybe, and that was with bi-weekly prodding. So, hopefully, we can, since we, this will be our second retail off-premise license, or we have two retail off-premise licenses, one for our store in Detroit and this store, so since we just went through the application process again recently, hopefully this goes fairly quickly. I would, you know, hope for approval from them late December, early, you know, early 2023. And we should, you know, of course, building permits and all of that, we should be able to get construction done relatively quickly, so, you know, I'd hope for a first-quarter opening.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Manager?
I just want to note, on the topic of the success of our downtown, this expansion is made possible not by business closing, but actually by the peninsula's moving and expanding into their new location, which is what freed up this area. So, this is actually the culmination of two great success stories of Berkeley businesses.
It's, it is the best of both worlds when you get the extra space you want, and it's not because someone's closing. You know, it's a really good feeling.
That is very true.
Especially for us. We definitely like that. We certainly prefer that.
Well, thank you for being with us this evening, for answering the questions clearly. We have some folks that are really excited and excited just about what you continue to do and what you bring to our community. And if this goes well, we'll send it up to our friends in Lansing and see what happens. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M-8722?
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Terbrecht?
Yes. Good luck, and thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number five on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-8822, matter of authorizing the Berkeley Instrumental Boosters Orchestra Association, 2325 Catalpa Drive, Berkeley, Michigan, to conduct Berkeley Tag Days 2022 in the City of Berkeley on Friday, October 14th from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m., Saturday, October 15th from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Sunday, October 16th from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Is there a motion to approve M-8822?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Henin with support from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an annual event that comes before council each year. If approved, the Berkeley sidewalks will be alive with music once again, brought to you by members of the student orchestra and the band from Berkeley High School. And so, I don't know if we have anybody here to represent the item, but the application is complete, it's been reviewed by the city clerk's office, and we do recommend approval on it.
Are there any questions from council to anybody? Obviously, this is something that we've done, that we do on an annual basis and work very well with the school, and are happy to help support them and the music. Oh?
Thank you. Just a comment, that I certainly appreciate the creativity and the energy that the students bring to our downtown and the vitality that they add to the business district as they're out there sharing their talents with us, and look forward to supporting them as well as the folks downtown along the way. So, looking forward to it. Thank you.
Certainly. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M-8822?
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number six on our agenda?
Motion number M-8922, matter of approving the appointments to various boards and commissions.
Is there a motion to approve M-8922?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Mayor Protam Dean. Mr. Baumgart?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, we continue to have a great slew of, uh, volunteer applicants, uh, that want to commit their time and energy and efforts to the City of Berkeley. Uh, this time, we have four boards, uh, that we're bringing free applications for. So we have the Board of Review. Uh, we have Thomas, um, Bayers. Hopefully, I say that correctly, because I'm gonna get this one correct, and then Uli, I'm sorry, I'm really gonna probably get yours incorrect. Uh, Mr. Bayers has a reappointment to a term, uh, ending July 1st, 2026. Uh, our Downtown Development Authority has a very robust process that they go through. Uh, they start first with, uh, an organizational committee that reviews all applicants that they have come before that body. Uh, they select a couple for interviews, they pair those down, they then transmit their recommendations to the Board of Trustees. Board of Trustees has the opportunity to talk to their applicants as well, uh, before finally the Board of Trustees voting as a, a recommendation to this body. So, uh, both Uli and Desiree have been through a very long process, uh, and both come with a hearty recommendation for partial terms, uh, expiring July 1 of 2026 and July 1 of 2025 respectively. Uh, the historical committee likewise, great group. Uh, they have gone through, they have an unlimited number, so if anybody else wants to, to join and, and take part in preserving the history of our community. Uh, it's Kathy Schmeling, hopefully, uh, for a reappointment, uh, to the 1st of July, 2025, and then our Planning Commission, uh, also has one, uh, member recommendation to you, uh, for appointment through July 1, 2023. So, uh, the applications keep on coming. We, uh, continue to review any and all vacancies and, and try to turn those around to the community as quickly as possible, and deliver to you as, as quickly as possible as well, a slew of qualified applicants. So these are the items that we have before you this evening, sir.
Thank you. Uh, comments or questions from council?
Well, I'd sort of like to thank, uh, all of the, all the volunteers that have, um, offered their, their talents and services to either, you know, renew or, or join our boards, and I do believe we have a couple of our folks here, uh, this evening, if anyone would like to, to come up and say a few words. Uh, if not, that's okay. Uh, just glad that you're here, and, and we greatly appreciate your, your volunteerism and, and support for our city. And you can put a plug in for your business.
I don't know how to do this, but I think I speak loudly enough. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to all for always encouraging us to be members of any organizations here in the city. It's my first council city, whatever you call this meeting.
We call it very exciting.
Together with Daisy Rae and Mike, we can move the city forward, and I'm so happy and thankful to be part of it.
Uli, could you share your business with us as well?
Oh, yes. Uh, I'm the owner of Ulman's. I'm the owner of Ulman's Health and Beauty, and the same as Monger's Cheese Sales is just fun to meet people that come to the city as well as residents that come again and again.
And, and you're on Coolidge, right?
Yes, we are on Coolidge.
Excellent.
Next to Vetrein, next to the office space, so we are next across from Tot Vine Books, so we are in a good area, and soon, Desiree is gonna join us, right, on Coolidge?
Fantastic.
Hello, my name is Desiree. I own, co-own a renovation company in Berkeley, Michigan. We have both been residents and business owners for residents 12 years, business owners 15. Um, and we are working on the building perch at 2717 Coolidge, and we are opening an office space within that building, which has allowed me to, um, become a board member, possibly, with your approval. I have been volunteering with Michael at the DDA for about a year and just really love supporting Berkeley in any way we can. So thank you for your consideration.
Well, thank you, and we thank you both, uh, certainly for being with us, and everybody else who has, again, volunteered their time and, and talents to, to our city. Um, as has been discussed by the chamber, and, and I'm sure Mr. McGinnis certainly would agree, the events are one thing, having volunteers and having folks who are willing to spend their time to make sure that those events are a success is equally as important, and we would not have those events and all the other, just incredible things that we're able to do in this community without volunteers, just like, uh, both of you and everybody else that are, that are on this, uh, agenda this evening. Any other comments from council members? I kind of jumped in front of everybody. I knew it would be. Okay. All right, perfect. Well, Desiree, let's see if you officially get in here. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on M-8922?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you both. You can relax. Will we now move on, Ms. Mitchell, to item number seven, please?
Motion number M-9022, matter of authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between SMART and the City of Berkeley for fiscal year 2023 for municipal credit and community credit funds in order to provide public transportation services for the period of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023.
Is there a motion to approve M-9022?
So moved. Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protam Dean with support from Councilmember Price. Mr. Baumgart?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is our annual renewal of our SMART contract. Uh, the, uh, I will make the, my annual note that we do receive this well past the 1st of July date. Uh, it is backdated to that date, but we usually typically do not get this until, uh, October, so they're actually a little bit ahead of their normal amount of late. Uh, so kudos to them. Um, but we do put these, these dollars right back into the community, as is true with any revenues that we have, uh, in the form of our transportation program, and, uh, Mr. Dan McMinn, uh, from our Parks and Rec Department is here to represent, uh, all the good things that they do with those monies.
Mr. McMahon, welcome.
Thank you very much for having me. Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, so as Mr. Baumgart said, this is one of two SMART contracts we see each and every year. Uh, this one is geared toward municipal and community credits. Um, and these contracts go to help fund, uh, the transportation service that we offer. Uh, a little bit about our transportation service is it is geared towards residents, uh, 50 years or older, semi-retired or retired, as well as all persons with disabilities. Um, all of our buses that we run are equipped with wheelchair lifts, so we are able to transport people in wheelchairs as well. Um, to take advantage of this program, you need to call the Parks and Recreation Department at 248-658-3470. Again, that number is 248-658-3470, and ask for transportation. At that time, you will be asked for your name, your address, the location in which you'll be dropped off in your appointment time. We will then go ahead and schedule your appointment. Uh, usually, you'll be picked up 30 minutes in advance of your, uh, appointment to make sure you get there on time. Um, we ask that appointments are made at least two days in advance, although, although they can be made months in advance. Um, I've already had an appointment for July of '23, I believe, so the earlier the better. Make sure you get your spot. Um, our service boundaries are 8 mile to 60 mile north and south, and Loser to John Art East and West. Um, at this time, I think if we wouldn't have this program without our drivers, so I'm gonna say a special thank you to them real quick. Without them, they're the lifeblood, lifeblood of the program. We wouldn't be able to do it without them, so very much appreciation goes out to them.
Mr. McMahon, you are just up here like a savvy veteran, knowing what people are gonna ask, and where, let it cover all of your bases in there.
I, I've, I've been here once or twice before, so I, I, it's kind of a, it's kind of a spiel at this point, but all very important information.
Incredibly important information, because every year, we need to know that, and, and, you know, I don't know if you know, we have a lot of new viewers that turn, tune in pretty regularly that may not have seen last year.
Absolutely. Great.
Knowing that and being able to get, especially, um, you know, how far out you guys go, where it is, the time, and, and how much, uh, early, how soon they need to get those appointments on the books.
Yep.
All incredibly, incredibly valuable information. We, we talk a lot about this, how, how just important this is for our community and the value, uh, that it brings, and the tremendous job that the drivers do. Get nothing but positive, uh, reports, uh, from everybody involved in something that we are, I shouldn't say we, I am incredibly happy to support. I shouldn't talk for anybody else, but, uh, thank you for providing that information, for being with us to answer any questions that we may have. Questions for Mr. McMinn. Councilmember Baker?
Uh, thank you, uh, Your Honor, and thank you again for bringing this, uh, before us. It is, uh, an annual event, but it's, uh, uh, appreciated every single time. Uh, if someone wanted to, to make one of those appointments for, you know, two days from now or two, you know, quarters from now.
Yeah.
Uh, what phone number would they call, or what email address would they, uh, contact?
So the best way to get in touch with us is via phone. Uh, call the Parks and Recreation Department, 248-658-3470, and ask for transportation. You'll either speak with someone in our front office or myself, and we'll get you taken care of.
Perfect. That sounds great.
Yeah.
Thank you again.
You're very welcome.
Any additional comments? Councilmember Price?
Thank you, Mayor Turbrack. I just wanted to take a moment to share a personal story. One of my best friends, her mom recently moved to Berkeley and, uh, recently became unable to drive, and my friend was taking her to all of her appointments and to groceries, and very overwhelmed. And I said, you know, we happen to have this valuable service, and, and it just, you could see the load taken off my friend's shoulders and the, the community that has been created for her mom. Not only the weight of having to arrange all the transportation from the family, excuse me, but the way that the drivers have interacted with her mom, have cared for her, have provided socialization. I mean, it is, it, it is so much more of a service than I think many of us even realize. So thank you for all that you do to facilitate it.
Absolutely. Again, I'm gonna take this time to thank our drivers for all of the hard work that they, that they do, whether it's loading groceries or putting walkers onto the vehicles. They are there and ready and willing to do whatever we need, whenever we need it. Uh, we, funny story, we had a, a senior call Friday at probably about 5:05 saying, hey, I lost my shoes at Meyer. I think they might be on the bus. And she called one of our drivers, and he was like, he ran right over, checked the bus. Unfortunately, they weren't there, but the above and beyond that our drivers are taking care of the residents is phenomenal, and I can't thank them enough.
Thank you, and I'm gonna take this opportunity to thank you, Dan McMinn, for running this program so seamlessly and efficiently. You just do an excellent job, along with the other senior programs and events. But this transportation piece, as we've all heard, and we all know how important it is. So, you know, your drivers, everybody's a reflection of the leadership that you bring, so thank you for that.
Thank you for saying that.
Sure.
Very much appreciated.
Well, again, thank you, Mr. McMinn, for bringing this and, and giving us all this, the valuable information on the program, and Ms. Mitchell, let's, uh, go ahead and collect some funds here. Would you please call the roll on M-9022?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number eight on tonight's agenda?
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation on the 2021 Community Development Department Annual Report.
Director Kepulansky, I think that's you.
That is me. So this evening, I am presenting to you the annual report for the Community Development Department. The Michigan Planning and Enabling Act does require the Planning Commission to file an annual report every year. As in past years, it has been expanded to include all of the development activities for the entire Community Development Department. This is also a requirement of the Redevelopment Ready certification. Um, so we are taking that, uh, taking care of that item as well with this. Also includes a future work plan, laying out the priorities for the next fiscal year for the department. The Planning Commission has accepted the report, and I will be sharing it with our liaisons at Redevelopment Ready Communities. Um, you don't need to take any action on it this evening, but it's just there for your information, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our director? Any particular highlights or lowlights that you wanna just hit for us here?
Um, one of the highlights that I will share is how many staff transitions we've had and how much we have upcoming. So I am very proud of the fact that the department has continued to provide excellent service to all of the increased commercial activity we've had over the past year as well, um, without missing a beat with lots of people cycling through.
Certainly. See, oh, Councilmember Baker?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I was actually gonna, uh, provide that same compliment to, to you, the staff, the Planning Commission, and all the folks involved. Uh, in spite of all of the, the changes and, and things, uh, we've been, we've been operating at steady clip, doing some tremendous work here, and I want to thank, thank you and your predecessors and the Planning Commission and all the folks involved in that to, to ensure that the businesses are able to move forward as expeditiously as possible, and yet still provide the appropriate checks and balances and quality that our, our residents and fellow businesses deserve. So, so thank you, uh, and looking forward to another great year.
Great. I will pass that thanks along to the staff who has been working tirelessly throughout all of these changes over the past year.
For sure.
Well, I think 2020 and 2021 were certainly not easy years, uh, to work through from a development perspective with a lot of questions, and as you mentioned, certainly some turnover and additional changes. So the fact that we were able to continue to keep things running as smoothly as we have, um, with other transitions in place, not only a, a tribute certainly to the great work of our commission, uh, and our staff, and also the leadership, uh, that we have in place, um, continuing in the future. So I'm very appreciative of what you are able to do now, uh, what you've done in your past roles, and what you're gonna continue to do in this role. So thank you very much, Director Kepulansky.
Thank you.
And we don't have to vote on it.
No.
Great. Uh, any other questions or comments for Kristen before we move on? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, then we will keep right on rolling to item number nine, please.
Resolution number R-1622, matter of adopting the Berkeley Downtown Master Plan.
Is there a motion to approve R-1622?
So moved, Your Honor.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support, uh, from Councilmember Vilani. Mr. Baumgart?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is a document that has been, uh, with us for quite a while at this point. Uh, the DDA Board of Trustees has looked at it. The Planning Commission has looked at it as well. Uh, and then we, we kind of took a pause on bringing this forward to the council for various reasons, uh, not the least of which is that we were able to complete an entire comprehensive master plan, uh, for our entire city. Uh, but they, certainly, the two documents absolutely complement each other. Uh, and now we bring this forward for its final required approval, uh, and that is from this body. It was a promise that we made at the outset of developing this plan, that it would go through all three bodies, uh, before really becoming a, a, a true plan for, for moving forward in our, uh, for our Downtown Development Board. Uh, you'll note in the resolution, and then in some of our backup materials, there are already some parts of it that need to be refreshed and revamped, and, uh, steps have already been taken by our Community Development Director to, to do so. So, uh, without further ado, uh, our Community Development Director and our DDA Director are both available for, to answer questions and, um, provide any information on the document.
Anything you'd like to add, Kristen, first?
No, I think Mr. Baumgart pretty much, um, covered it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. McGinnis?
The work that went into it does predate me, so I want to take this opportunity to celebrate, uh, the previous staff members of the Downtown Development Authority and the Board of Directors members, current and previous, and community volunteers. There was a lot of community engagement and stakeholder feedback that took place, um, some time ago, and I just want to celebrate the community that helped shape and hone and improve this document that's before you, and I'm grateful for the city and the council's receptivity to ensuring that the hard work that went into it and the investment that the Downtown Development Authority, uh, invested into the professional document, that it can be put to good use. And every step of the way, I can, uh, echo that the city manager and, uh, the previous Community Development Director as well, now that, with our new Community Development Director, have made sure that they, it can be harmonious and compatible, compatible, not combative. And that there's more work to be done, uh, and we've already got a lot of active plans afoot so that we can have further comprehensive, uh, review of parking, for example, both in our downtown and throughout the community, and we look forward to that collaboration, so that way we can maximize the usefulness for the community.
Uh, thank you both. Questions from our council members for either of our directors here? Councilmember Henan?
Yeah, so not a question, but just a comment that overall, I think it's a very good document. Um, I've always been unhappy with the parking section, but, you know, with the acknowledgement that, uh, that'll be redone, and we're already in the process of, um, starting to work on a comprehensive parking plan, not just for downtown, but the entire city. You know, I feel comfortable voting on yes for this tonight and look forward so we can start working on the implementation.
Thank you. I, I guess I should stop, ask for questions. Is everybody says now a question, a comment? Are there any more comments on the downtown master plan that we have here? No. And again, this is not something that was just thrown together yesterday or last week and thrown on the agenda. This is something that a lot of thought and conversation has gone into, and something that we can be very excited, um, about what the future holds for our downtown. Without any, uh, additional comments, uh, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-16- Without any additional comments, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-1622?
Henon?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number 10 on tonight's agenda?
Resolution Number R-1722, matter of considering updates to the Berkeley fee schedule effective October 1st, 2022.
Is there a motion to approve R-1722?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Dean with support from Councilmember Henon. Mr. Baumgarten?
Like, Ms. Mayor, this item comes to you likewise by way of our Community Development Department. You've seen the attached memo, the, some of the process improvements that Kristen and her staff have started, and this is one of the ways that we can improve the manner by which we service applicants and making sure that we have our costs covered in the course of reviewing applications for all the new developments coming forth in the city of Berkeley.
Ms. Kepalansky, anything else?
Yeah, just a few things to add. So, we have seen a, a big increase in the complexity of projects over the past year or so, and they have required a number of review hours that are exceeding our costs, and we're having to go back and ask the applicants for some additional funds to cover those costs. So, this would bring those reviews and the costs associated and originally collected in line with what we anticipate actually will be needed. It also includes some additional review fees for planning site plan review, now that we have a planning consultant to take care of a lot of those as well. The other thing I wanted to point out is I did have the opportunity to go through some of our neighboring communities and other comparable communities in the county, and did find these increases to be in line with what other communities are charging.
I cannot imagine that applicants are generally really happy when you have to go back to them and say it's going to cost them.
No, they're not.
That probably doesn't bode well, but the reality is, as things become more complex, it takes more time, and it takes more folks to get to that right decision, or the ability to even make a decision. And, and that's just the reality of what's happening here, and so before us, we have some of those changes outlined that reflect what our director has just told us. Any comments from Ms. Kepalansky? No? Okay. Well, thank you, Kristen, for bringing this to us as well. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R-1722?
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Will we now move on to item number 11, please?
Ordinance Number O-422, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend Article 2 of Chapter 90, Planning Commission of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, to reduce the size of the Planning Commission from nine to seven members, and to authorize the appointment of a City Council member to the Planning Commission.
Is there a motion to approve O-0422? So moved. Motion made by Councilmember Gavin?
With support.
With support from Mayor Protem Dean. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thanks, Mayor. This item comes to you by way of the Community Development Department. One of the conversations that we've had as of late is whether or not nine is the appropriate number for the, for the Planning Commission. We have had quite, pretty significant turnover on that body as people move out of the city or they just retire after two full decades of serving the community. But we have struggled with trying to find new members whose background and professional experiences complement the work that this body does. And so, for that reason, and looking at what is provided for by the state statute, we have started the conversation about maybe moving that number of planning commissioners from nine down to seven, which is the middle number provided by the state. You can either go five, seven, or nine. As this, as I said in that previous email, as this council knows, wonderful decisions can be made by seven individuals, and so we thought it would be good to propose mirroring the size of the Planning Commission with the size of the council. One of the other portions of the, this ordinance applicant, or draft would be allowing for what the state allows for, which is to have a member of this body actually serve also on the Planning Commission. There was nobody specifically asking for that, but it would give council one additional option to potentially put somebody on there to fill out the ranks, should the mayor see fit, who state statute names the mayor specifically as the individual who appoints, and the council confirms. So, both of those potential changes are reflected in the document. City Attorney did draft that ordinance language, and then the Community Development Director approved it, and then she's been our main champion for this item so far. So, that is why she is the best person to ask any questions to regarding this topic.
Before we get to discussion, Ms. Kepalansky, is there anything else just to add as far as the, laying the backstory here?
Yeah, I think that Mr. Baumgarten laid a good backstory for, for reducing the number of members on the Planning Commission, but I just wanted to comment really briefly on the council perspective, and I'm commenting somewhat as a former Planning Commissioner. It would be really valuable for the council or for the Planning Commission to have some input at meetings as to whether or not the council is seeing a project go in the direction that they would like to go, or an ordinance amendment go in a particular direction. That type of insight is really valuable, and I think something that, that is needed on the Planning Commission. That will just be my brief plug for that one item. The main goal of this is to reduce it from, from nine to seven, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, let's take this one at a time. Appears that we have two items for council to discuss. First is reducing the number from nine to seven, and the second item would be whether a member of council appointing to the Planning Commission with voting rights. All right. First, discussion on changing the number of nine to seven, and the, we've already heard why we're here and what we're discussing, any vehement arguments to that change. Councilmember Henon?
I'm fine with that. You know, I think if we had seven right now, we wouldn't be saying, "Hey, we need to have a nine-member Planning Commission." So, you know, I'm fine with the number seven.
I can certainly tell you, no other residents have come up to me and said, "We need more council members." Goes the other way. Okay. We'll just take a quick straw, then.
Yes, I'm fully in support of seven members of the Planning Commission.
Councilmember Baker?
I'm fine with me.
Seven.
Yes. I agree, so, okay. Part one, easier. Okay, seven. Part two, as has been mentioned a couple times, one of the council members may be appointed by resolution of the City Council to the Planning Commission as an ex officia member with full voting rights, but cannot be the chair of the Planning Commission. Let's just open this up first to just general feedback, thoughts. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I do have a concern about the potential precedent that this sets of a council member serving as a voting member on a board or commission that makes recommendations to council. I think the possible, even perceived conflicts of interest in those recommendations, the potential inability to vote in both roles, or the then potential to have split votes on those odd member bodies when a vote cannot be cast. Those are all reasons that I am leaning away from supporting this change to our ordinance.
May I address that for a moment?
Yes, please.
It would not be a conflict of interest. The state, there are many communities that do this. I don't know if there's an official survey out there by the MML or anything like that, just from my own personal travels and observations. There are many communities that do appoint, that do have, their council appoints one of their own to the Planning Commission, and there's many like Berkeley that don't. It's a matter of local preference, but the specter of conflict of interest is, is a non-issue because there's specific authority in the Michigan Planning Act authorizing this. So, if, if the council did go this direction and did point, appoint a council member to the Planning Commission, that council member would be able to vote in both roles, both of the Planning Commission and as a city council member. That's only for the Planning Commission, because there are other instances where, for instance, if council appointed one of their own to the, to the Zoning Board of Appeals, say, or some other board, then there could be a conflict of interest situation, but not, not with respect to the Planning Commission. So, I just wanted to get out there. There may be, there may be many other reasons why council would want to go this direction or not go this direction, but conflict of interest concern should not be a deterrent.
May I have a follow-up question to that? I think maybe I'm misusing the phrase "conflict of interest." I think that has made perhaps a legal meaning that was not what I intended. I think my concern is often when we receive recommendations from the Planning Commission, one of the things that I value about that recommendation is that it was made by an independent body, and that that recommendation is not being affected directly by one, by a member of the council who will also be voting on the same issue. And I think that's what I'm afraid we will lose if we make this change. Thank you.
Is it fair to summarize that you are in the no camp on this?
Yes. I, correct.
Yes, you're in the no.
I am in the no.
Councilmember Henon?
I personally want to, on the, I don't want to call it conflict of interest, but on that point, I had reached out to the, as part of my Master Citizen Planner credentials, reached out to experts at MSU Extension and had asked, just generically, "Do you have any input on this?" And the person that responded said, you know, "I've worked with two communities that do this, have a council member on the Planning Commission, and it works fine." But unsolicited, she specifically said, "They should not vote on both bodies." So, you know, I don't know if hers was a legal, legal advice or a practical sort of advice, but her, you know, unsolicited recommendation was, "Don't allow them to vote on both bodies." I'm, I'm uneasy with this as well, you know. Some of the motivations seem to be that we can't necessarily find qualified people for the Planning Commission, but I think what we've been defining as qualified people are too narrow, looking for people with, you know, you know, educational, professional backgrounds, but I think we need some layman on the board, too, to fully represent the community. Our chair right now is someone with no, of that, none of that formal training, but, you know, we just need people that are sharp and willing to learn, but I still absolutely value the experts on there as well. We need a mix, you know, I think. And then there's nothing to say if we try and fill that role with a planning, or with a city council member, that they're, that that person's going to have that expertise. I think that we can fill the gap that Ms. Kepalansky mentioned with the current liaison position. Can't, you know, they can ask, you know, what, you know, what direction is council leaning? Do you have any sentiment on the tree board? I get that all the time and share, you know, I'm, I'm always clear, I'm one of seven, you know, it's going to have to go, but, you know, sometimes I have an intuition of, you know, how things, you know, are moving, and I think the liaison position could fulfill that role, you know, and to put that on councilmember Gavin without discussing it with him.
That's okay, I was going to throw it on him anyway.
But, yeah, I would be a no on the councilmember provision.
I guess we'll just stay on this side of the table. Councilmember Baker, what are your thoughts?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm likewise concerned. I, I'm aware of communities that have voting members from council on Planning Commission, and I'm also aware of the potential thoughts around somebody providing undue influence, either with direct language or with just their, their dual roles. I think the liaisons, if anything, are an underserved asset to the community, much like my colleagues' comments. I, too, have been asked to provide my own individual thoughts, not representing this board, but just indicating, you know, on the, on the committees to which I liaise, if that's a word, you know, which, where, where do I think things might be headed? And I'm able to provide that more as just an additional data point for that board to consider, rather than providing a bit more of a formal authoritative, you know, this is where it's going to go, you know, kind of a deal. So, although there are communities that have this in place, I think to the city attorney's point, we have the opportunity to make our decision for what's best for us, and I'd like us to, to, to proceed with the seven, and, and if nothing else, to bolster the, the opportunity for the liaison to provide comments or, or at least to respond to questions as they see fit.
Okay.
Thank you.
You, that's another vote for Councilmember Gavin.
I agree with what's been said. I, I really have nothing further to add. The reasons that have been stated, I, I do support those, and congrats.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Do you want to vote, or do you want to just be able to provide?
No, I think the, the Community Development Director more eloquently stated the value of it than, than I could, so I will, I will leave it at that, but I think the big thing here is obviously going from the, the nine to the seven, and so, you know, certainly wouldn't want to hold that up in, in any measure. I guess the, yeah, so I, outside of that, I don't really have much more to, to say on it, other than the fact that it is permissive. You know, it's not something to be required. It's if we get in a, a little bit of a pinch, it can be done, so it doesn't mean it has to be done. So, I guess that would be the only thing I would add to it, but like I said, the, the main thing, certainly not wanting to hold up any movement from nine to seven, which I think is a, a more appropriate number.
I'm not sure what that ambiguity he meant in terms of actually supportive or not of the... I, I appreciate everything that you said. I appreciate everything you said. You, you, you gave a nice, well-worded, eloquent, non-answer. We'll move right ahead.
Perfect politician.
An attorney, right?
Councilmember Vilani?
I am in agreement with my fellow councilmembers. Additionally, I guess, would, if we had someone appointed on the seven, would we also have liaison? Because then that really would have two voices from council in one meeting, which I think adds an additional layer of influence that we probably would not want to put upon there.
Okay, well, yep.
Yeah, as we're discussing, I thought, you know, it seems like one of the motivations is a, for better term, lack of communication between us and the Planning Commission, and there might be room for more joint sessions or joint committees, you know, when there are, to use the marijuana licensing, you know, the provisions, I think we could have benefited from more joint action, you know, on that.
Get the pun, yeah.
Not even intended. But, you know, so, you know, there might be some room for, you know, just more working together and collaboration, and I think that would probably fill what we're looking for here.
Well, it appears that council...
Mayor, yep. If I may, just to kind of pick up where Councilman Henon left off, my belief that the intent or the reason behind the authorization in the Michigan Planning Enabling Act to have a council member on there really flows from what Councilmember Henon was, was getting into. I, I think it's, it's recognizing that although all our, our, our boards and commissions and their members provide a valuable service to the community, the Planning Commission has a very important and difficult function, and in many ways, perhaps what the Planning Commission does is maybe even more impactful, that impacts the community more broadly and for a longer term than perhaps the actions of other boards and commissions, when we talk about the master plan and zoning changes and special land use approvals and that sort of thing. So, I really think the intent recognizes that, and also it's the communication aspect. And we've already identified here in the last 10 minutes the importance of that, but different ways that, that the council can, the elected officials on council can communicate with the Planning Commission, whether it be through maybe a stronger role, a more vocal role with the liaison, joint meetings, that type of thing. But the important thing is that there is that communication. I have seen in my travels where the Planning Commission is going off in a different direction than the elected council members, and it creates for a very disjointed, and not, not a good look for the community. But by the same token, you don't want to necessarily go the other way where the Planning Commission isn't... Commission is in complete lockstep all the time with the city council and doesn't have that degree of independence and open-mindedness that we talk about. So anyway, I'm kind of rambling on here, but I just want to embellish on that a little bit. The key is to have that communication. And whether you're doing it through appointing one of your own to the Planning Commission to provide that communication conduit, or whether you're taking advantage of these other means, it's important that you do that.
I don't think you're going to find anyone that disagrees with, with that. It just appears that the majority of council certainly feels that we can do that without having a council member appointed as a voting member of the Planning Commission. Is that fair, Representative? Okay, so councilmember Gavin, you made the motion, which is going to, so either you can amend it or we can go a different direction.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to interject for a moment. I don't want to make it seem like the Planning Commission has not valued Mr. Gavin as the liaison. Traditionally, it just hasn't been the role, in my experience, of the Planning Commission meetings to directly ask questions of, of the city council liaison. But if that's the direction that council would like to see this move, that would serve that purpose as well.
I think it is, that is certainly fair. Again, the only time it could become an issue, as has been mentioned before, is if you're asking our liaison, hey, how's council going to vote on this? Or what do you, I mean, those are obviously difficult questions for him to answer, but yes, being involved and, and being a resource there, which has happened in the past, certainly I know. I, I think that is the role that liaisons play in, in all of their boards at least.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor. I, I agree with that, and certainly I don't believe it's anyone's intent to signal this, but I wouldn't want a potential assignment of a council member onto Planning Commission to in any way indicate or, or reflect a lack of trust or deliberation on behalf of the Planning Commission. Meaning if we were to say, you know, we are not really liking what you're doing, so we're going to stick one of our own on there in order to right the ship or whatever, that's certainly not the case, because it's, it's been led excellently and they make very wise decisions. And so, you know, if we were to move forward with that provision, either now or in the future, I would certainly want to make sure to indicate that this is not a, a lack of any kind of trust.
It's not punitive.
Exactly. This is meant to just help ensure that we have, you know, at least shared understanding, if not an alignment, where we want to head.
Want them to certainly have their continued independence to do the great work that they have done and not feel like we're trying to watch over or micromanage that in any way.
Correct. That's not the case at all.
No. And it's not going to, it's going to continue to be that way. So, Mr. Gavin, back to the motion that you have on the table. We either need to amend that motion. Would you be so inclined to do so?
Sure. We can do that to, to change it, to not have a city council member as a voting member of the Planning Commission and just keep it from the nine to seven.
Mayor Protem, you supported the motion. Are you okay with that change?
I'm fine with that, yes.
Mr. Attorney, are we okay on this?
That's fine, and if council moves in that direction, I'll work with, with Director Campolansky and we'll provide you with a revised, proposed ordinance that eliminates the provision about appointing a council member.
Okay, so those would be struck in, from a procedural perspective, we're okay with those amendments to the original maker of the motion and supporter of the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Any final, all right, congratulations, Councilmember Gavin.
I'm in the same role I was before this discussion.
You are in the same role, but I feel like you're going to get some questions now. Okay. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on O-0, 0422?
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to item number 12, please.
Ordinance number 0522, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, to amend the first reading of an ordinance to amend section 94-7, signs requiring permits and section 94-12, non-conforming signs in chapter 94, signs of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordinances, to allow for signs for multi-tenant buildings and allow copy on non-conforming signs to be replaced.
Is there a motion to approve 00522?
So moved.
Support. Motion made by Mayor Protem Dean with support from Councilmember Henin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As acknowledged in the community development report, a full sign rewrite is on the horizon. We recognize the need for that. However, this item comes to you by way of our community development director again, who has isolated a, a specific section that needs to be addressed more near term and cannot, in this case, await a, a full rewrite next year. So Ms. Campolansky is currently setting the record this evening for standing at the podium, and she's ready to answer questions on this item as well.
Director.
Just a few things to add. This is partially in response to some recent zoning board of appeals cases and really just common sense implementation of, of what probably should have originally been in there. So this would allow for the text on non-conforming signs to be changed without having to go to the zoning board of appeals. That would be reviewed administratively by staff. That would help businesses that are either moving into a, a space or looking to update their signage. And it also revises provisions to allow for the signage to be calculated on multi-tenant buildings for each unit instead of the, the building as a whole. We've run into some instances lately where the 100 square foot maximum for the entire building really becomes a problem when you have, you know, four and five tenants. So it's just a common sense way of looking at those regulations. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Director Campolansky. Councilmember Valani?
With the changes that you are recommending, are there businesses that might be, I guess, negatively impacted or any undue burden on those businesses with the cost of changing signage that they may not have wanted or anticipated?
No, I don't see any negative impacts. We didn't do a, a survey of the whole community to determine if this would make any signs non-conforming. My hunch is that it would not. But even if it did, those non-conforming signs can continue. They would not fall under the current provisions unless they came in to do some significant updates in the size of their signage. So that would be fine. And then cost-wise, this would actually lower the cost, because potential applicants would not need to go to the zoning board of appeals, which is an additional charge if they did not meet the, the provisions that are currently in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Councilmember Price, I'll go both ways.
A comment, please, thank you, Your Honor. Just gratitude. I think this process of updating our ordinances and our zoning to reflect what was intended, and like you said, some common sense, is so important. I'm grateful for the work, and I'm sure this will be the first of many coming before us with these necessary updates. So thank you.
Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Kind of building on that from a comment perspective, thank you for this. I certainly will be supporting of it. I think I'm actually first up on the roster here as we get to it. More of a question for the city manager in terms of the, the timing of the more broad sign revisions. As you know, I've been in communication with city manager's office for more than a year and a half now on lawn sign updates, and I was told that no sign changes would be made until the comprehensive updates. And although I do believe that this is warranted, and I'll absolutely be supporting it tonight, I am curious as to any recommitment to, to moving forward on additional updates ahead of a, a broad plan, or if there's more that we can say in terms of the timing of the broad plan, because certainly it's been, it's been quite a while.
Sure.
And I continue to hear from residents about the lawn sign issue, and, and I'm glad to see this tonight, and maybe this is opening the door that maybe we could see that sooner than the, the rest of the, the comprehensive review.
It potentially could. I've not had, I have not had the, that conversation with Ms. Campolansky since she stepped into this role, but it is something we can discuss with her and potentially bring for some, some improvements in working with the city attorney's office.
Great, thanks. Yeah, I have all those messages from, you know, the, the past year and a half. I'd be happy to, to dig those out and contribute to any conversation that you're able to facilitate.
Okay, thank you. Additional? Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, and, you know, this is going to address three cases that the zoning board of appeals heard recently, and they had communicated their desire for these changes. They vote, they approved all of those variance requests and, and saw a need for a change in the law. And so they'll be appreciative to have some of their evenings back as well.
Seeing no additional questions or comments, thank you for bringing this to us, making some common sense quick updates to our sign ordinances, and hopefully this is the first of, if it was mentioned, they, we can't just attack some of the ones that we're, we're hearing more of, at least the entire revision to our sign ordinance in the near future. Certainly looking forward to that. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on 00522?
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Thank you. I think you're, you're done, huh?
For tonight.
Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number 13 on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R1822, matter of authorizing the amendment of the 2022-2023 operating budget as presented.
Is there a motion to approve R1822? So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Henin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our first set of budget amendments for our current fiscal year, which began on the 1st of July. In your packet, Mr. Pollak has provided an overview of where this, where we stand as far as the city's finances go and the general fund fund balance as well. Also included in your packet is the line-by-line of the budgetary items that are cited in this amendment. Broadly speaking, as Mr. Pollak's memo states, this is largely reflecting of carryover items that did not come to full fruition in the previous budget year, which ended June 30 of this year. And Mr. Pollak is here to answer any specific questions you may have.
Mr. Finance Director, is there, are there any changes in particular you want to call attention to?
One of the bigger ones was the additional $800,000 that we received as of June 30th for the second half of the federal grant for COVID funding. That, we didn't amend it, but we put it in the following year because we expected to get it in July. So we're pulling that back out, the current year's budget. And as Mr. Baumgarten stated, the majority of these items, almost all of them, are carryover items. I don't know how tired you are of hearing supply chain issues, but I know a lot of these are due to that, things that got pushed back. I didn't check with Mr. Church, but he'll probably be pleased to see that I put the painting of the library interior and exterior back in. One huge piece of great news is we did really well in revenues, bounced back in the previous fiscal year. We're going to end the year with a surplus. I know that $800,000 has a lot to do with that, but these carryovers would leave us about $1,048,000 in the general fund in additional deficit for next year. We're still going to be under $2 million deficit for the year, but that's still going to leave our fund balance well over the, the policy level of 25%. We should still be close to 30, I think, when we get all done, but, but we had, surprisingly, we had a, a surplus for the year. But again, as you are all aware, when we went through the budget process, we cut a lot of capital, and that hasn't changed. We haven't added any of that back in this. These are just carryovers from last year. So, you know, the, it's part of a process. I still believe coming up, we're, we're going to have to put some information out to our voters, but the good news is we finished the year better than we thought, and these items, we can carry over comfortably and still not drain our fund balance to a level below the 25%.
And while that is good news, certainly for this year, as was just mentioned, that does not necessarily change what we had to kick kind of down the road in terms of capital and what Hadley is continuing to do to our budget and the conversations that we will be having here in the very near future with our residents. Any questions or comments for our director? No? Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Pollak. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R1822?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number 14 on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R1922, matter of approving the resolution to amend the public safety collective bargaining agreements to add standardized language necessary in order to maintain the qualified status of the public safety pension system under the provisions of the U.S. Internal Revenue Code.
Is there a motion to approve R1922?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Price with support from Councilmember Valani. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item comes to you by way of our Public Safety Pension Board, of which Mr. Pollak is a, sits on that board by virtue of his title as city's treasurer. Essentially, as, as outlined in the memos, we work with independent counsel on keeping us consistent with the Internal Revenue Code. One of the options that we did have under the, what's called the Secure Act, which is an acronym for a longer name, we, we have the option of adopting these, the following changes here in order to keep us as a qualified plan under the Internal Revenue Code as stated in the memorandum or the motion itself. So we are opting to take that step under the advisement of Ms. Cynthia Billings-Dunn, who serves as the attorney for the pension board. It's been looked at by our labor attorney, as well as Mr. Sterren, and all are in agreement that this is an appropriate matter to bring forth to the council with a recommendation for approval.
Questions or comments on this item? Mr. Attorney, anything you'd like to add other than what was already discussed?
No, I think the city manager covered it pretty well, and you've had, yeah, you've had three, three different, different sets of attorneys looking at it. We're, we're all on, literally on the same page on it. It's, it's something that we, we should do, and it's just, again, adding the standardized language to this and to be, to keep our plan in conformance with the current law.
Yeah, certainly think we need to take those RMDs up from 70 and a half to 72, which is going to be a part of this. Any additional questions or comments? Okay, well, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on R1922?
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Price?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. We now move on to communications. Councilmember Henin, I believe you are up first.
Yes, so the tree board, after their summer hiatus, will be meeting on Monday, September 26th, 7:00 p.m. at the Public Safety Conference Room. The zoning board of appeals in their August meeting, they approved an addition on a triangular lot. That's really a textbook case of why the ZBA exists. How many triangular lots do we have in the city? Two. And so they didn't have any cases in September, but they will have a case in October 10th at 7:00 p.m. here at city council chambers for a request for a home addition. I'm going to have my next Talk with Dennis event on Thursday, October 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the library. People are welcome to stop by anytime, anytime in that timeframe, just to talk with any questions or concerns you might have. And then finally, COVID boosters are finally here, so, and they're available to nearly everyone ages 12 and up. The Pfizer and Moderna boosters, they cover both the original strain and the newer variants, so I encourage people to consider getting those and be thinking about getting your flu shots soon, too. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Price?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Turbrack. Last week, I had the privilege of attending a joint meeting of the Citizens Engagement Advisory Committee and the Technology Advisory Committee. The combination of familiar new faces, as well as the breadth and depth, the professional and personal experiences brought to the table was impressive. I look forward to the results of their collaborative work on the brand refresh and the new website. The library board will meet again on Wednesday, 7:00 p.m. at the library. They will review the board's establishing ordinance and the materials selection policy, and they will review a draft of a letter from them supporting the Patmos Library Board of Trustees. We are very fortunate here in Berkeley to have such engaged and passionate members of our library board, who are also committed to advocating on behalf of intellectual freedom, access to a diverse selection of materials, and the many benefits to our society that libraries provide. Thank you to our library board members for your dedication and support of our beloved Berkeley library.
Thank you. Councilmember Price?
Sorry, Councilmember Baker?
Oh, that's me. All right, cool. Hey, well, happy September, everybody, and welcome the autumnal equinox here coming up pretty soon. The historical committee met last week's Tuesday, the 13th. Preparations continue for our 100th anniversary as a village. Tuesday, the thirteenth. Preparations continue for our hundredth anniversary as a village, which was nineteen twenty-three. We welcome any photos and stories that you'd like to share anywhere along that journey, before, during, or after our time as a, as a village. And the committee is now on both, in addition to Facebook, they're on Twitter, and what's the thing, Instagram. And so they are at Berkeley Historical Museum, which is really cool. And speaking of the museum, they're open Wednesdays from ten until one, and Sundays from two until four. And if you can't wait, you can visit them online at Berkeleyhistory.com. DDA Board of Directors met the very next day, Wednesday, the fourteenth, and one of the many conversation topics was around the crosswalks on Coolidge. They, they remain committed and dedicated to, to seeing those safely and properly reopened for, for the benefit of all of our residents and shoppers and students as they make the way across, back and forth across Coolidge. And we are coming up on the wonderful month of October, and as was mentioned at the onset of our meeting here, the Buchley events are coming up here pretty soon. I'll just highlight a few of them. The Restaurant Weekend is coming up on September thirtieth through October first. Witch's Night Out is September thirteenth. Buchley Ghost Chase is a fun event coming up on the twenty-first. The Trick or Treat Stroll is on the twenty-ninth, as is the Monster Mash, where we'll be closing off portions of Coolidge, so that we can really enjoy that event in safe terror, if we do a good job with that, I don't know. Anyway, for more information on that, if you'd like to be a sponsor, or just to learn more about the great things our downtown is doing, please visit them at downtownberkeley.com. And finally, it was Helen Keller who wrote, optimism is the faith that leads to achievement. Nothing can be done without hope and confidence. And as we wrap up the summer and look to the fall, let's focus on the ways that this year has been great thus far, and what each, what each of us can do to help make this autumn equally great, if not better. Together, we can make our, our own lives and those of our neighbors and relatives and friends and family and our city even better as we head into the fall. And please stay safe, everybody, and hug somebody you love, because they need it more than, than you think they do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam, Dean?
Thank you. I want to thank everyone who came out and enjoyed the Parks and Recreation Summer Concert Series, the outdoor movies and more events that the Parks and Rec sponsored this summer. I can tell you, I, I popped into a couple of them, and the Sonic Two was the movie that I chose to pop into. But the beauty of it was, you had tons of families. Not only they were watching the movie, kids were playing on the playground equipment. It was just a beautiful thing to see, and I can't say enough about the great things that Parks and Rec brings to our community. I also want to thank the sponsors who made that event possible, because it was free. Anybody could attend, and it, it was no cost to participants, and that was because of the great sponsorship that we have. So thank you to all the sponsors. Touch a Truck is Saturday, October first, in the community center parking lot from ten a.m. until noon, with a sensory-friendly half hour from nine thirty to ten. There is no registration required. I'm going to be there with my grandson this year. I can't wait. He doesn't know. Tail on the Trail is October twentieth at Oxford Park, and there is registration for that. It opens up on September twentieth. Space is limited, so call Parks and Rec or register online, but do it early so that you won't be sad if you don't get a spot. The ever-popular senior exercise class is back at the community center on Tuesdays and Fridays from nine thirty to ten thirty. No registration required, but there is a two-dollar fee to drop into that. And check out more fall classes at recreation.berkleymish.org, or stop by the community center, and you can look at the schedule there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Planning was kind of a hot topic of discussion tonight, so we'll keep it a little short. Suffice it to say that the next meeting will be September twenty-seventh at seven p.m. here in council chambers. Environmental Advisory Committee did meet last week and discussed short-term and long-term goals for the community, ranging from the community education efforts that continually, continually go on, put on by the EAC, along with stormwater management policies, to a sustainability plan, to community gardens. So a lot of great topics, and many more that, that have not been named. So, next meeting will be October twentieth at six thirty in the second-floor conference room in the Public Safety Building. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Gavin. I think I speak for everybody as we look forward to your new enhanced liaison role. Councilmember Vilani?
I just want to echo Councilmember Price's comments on last week's joint meeting of both our TAC and CEAC committee. Excited to see what they have in store there. And then also Berkeley Area Chamber, just reiterating the commentary about the Burke Perk Discount Card, which will be going on sale soon, and that will provide you with discounts on dining and shopping at our local Berkeley businesses. And that's all for me.
Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those visiting City Hall in the last couple of weeks noticed a new look, as we were able to update our counter space. I think at least quadruple the amount of counter space we have to service our residents, and make some changes in our internal workflow as well, swapping the location of treasury and community development. I want to start by thanking the residents for their patience. We were closed for the week following Labor Day in order to complete this project in a timely manner. People were very supportive as we posted pictures and updates. A lot of people cheering us on and saying, you know, it's about time, and well done, and happy to see the change happen. So cannot be happier with, with the upbringing of support that we've had. None of it would have happened at all if not for our own staff being so open to making this change. They meticulously packed up their, their desks and their workspaces in advance of making the big project. We completely filled this room with the contents of our office spaces, and then systematically brought it all back out and put it all in place, and we were ready to go that next Monday, ready to serve the Berkeley residents. And very little of that would have happened without Alex Brown, our facilities manager, so I specifically want to say thank you to him. He coordinated this project and the various vendors that it took to, to make it a success. So thank you to all around. Hopefully, anybody visiting City Hall from now until whenever they decided this was a terrible idea, and they redo the whole thing in thirty years. Hope you enjoy the, the new look, and we're, we're very happy to show it off. And there are security benefits, there's workful benefits, there's service benefits. So we checked all of our main boxes here, and we're very, very happy with the way that all turned out. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you to council for, for making the resources available to do so.
I also understand that you were in attendance in Ford Field on Sunday. Why don't you tell us what happened there?
Yeah, the, not only did the Lions get a win, and I brought my special Lions tie for it, but our very own freshman Berkeley Steelers, our eight-to-ten-year-old tackle program, got to play on Ford Field against the Reed City Coyotes after the game. So it was a great opportunity to bring out, we probably had a hundred-plus members of, of our community there to root them on. It was the only time we'll root for black and yellow in Ford Field, but it was a great opportunity. We, a couple of kids got to score touchdowns on Ford Field against another team, and that's just a memory that they'll never shake. So congratulations to, to all involved in making that happen, and congratulations to the Berkeley Steelers.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to commend Mr. McGinnis for finding my doppelganger next to me here.
That was the city attorney before you.
Actually, I was a little worried. Actually, I was a little worried when I came in here. I thought maybe I'd been replaced by a leaner and meaner version of the city attorney, but we've been keeping very busy despite it having been the, the summer season, lots going on in Berkeley, as you know, including legal issues. We've been working on a lot of ordinances. Our new community development director hit the ground running and has all kinds of things in the works. FOIA requests seem to be nonstop and more complicated as they go along. Ordnance enforcement issues, and, and also, although we don't like to talk about litigation, pending litigation matters publicly, we have been very busy, a lot of brief writing and so on with the marijuana cases that are still working their way through the system. So we'll, we'll keep you posted on those things, and anything new that arises, and trying to keep up with everybody, as the administration is staying busy trying to do good things for the city.
Thank you. And we didn't rehearse this, but my comments were also about the theme of ending the summer, moving into the fall, and looking back at all the incredible things that, that we, we did. This is probably the most normal-ish summer we've had in the last two years. Hearing, you know, from our finance director that revenues were surprisingly up, a lot of the things that we were able to do, you know, Summer Fest and Art Bash and the Lids for Kids, everything from our block parties, the ribbon cuttings, I mean, just so many things, you know, summer concerts here, all the Summer Fest events, so many things that were able to happen in our community over the summer. Important to remember those, and what a tremendous summer it was. Yes, kids are back, back in school, and now they're just thinking about Christmas right around the corner. But it was a very special summer in our community. And again, that didn't happen, wouldn't have happened without our incredible directors, our staff, our volunteers, the residents, just who want to see these events and enjoy these events, and are willing to volunteer their time so that the entire community can enjoy those things. That is what makes us Berkeley. That is what makes us special, and I look forward to continuing to attend all of those events next summer. That doesn't mean we don't have any events coming up in the fall. We already know that. We've got a lot coming. Buchley's right around the corner, but, but certainly a very impactful and memorable summer, I think, for our community. So I just want to thank everybody who played a role in that happening. Now, kids, go to bed. You got school tomorrow. They're all watching, I'm sure. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Protam, Dean. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Price?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes. The September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of the Thirty-Ninth Council of the City of Berkeley is adjourned.